Good evening, if we could all stand for the pleasure of the lesions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, alright, so, give me a second. Alright, again, good evening. And we get a roll call, please.
Gardner?
Here.
Christie?
Here.
Deacon?
Here.
Pomelo?
Here.
Strubing?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
And Watson?
Here.
Alright, all are present?
Approval of minutes from July 8th?
I make a motion, we approve the meeting, the minutes from the July 8th meeting.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor? Ananamous? Uh, petitions and communications, uh, anything?
I, I do not have anything.
Okay, great, moving on, uh, report of the town manager.
Yes, um, so we met this week, um, so Parks and Rec, I want to thank for a successful Standish Spectacular. The parade was great, staff really did a tremendous job, the fireworks were great. Uh, HRGA have, um, a ton of passports they're processing, we've done several general assistance. Um, and assessing, they are working on the commitment, we have a meeting Monday. Uh, finance has been crushing it, we're short-staffed, um, so we thankful for that, they're working on the audit. So they're doing that, um, fire department, uh, staffed, uh, highlights, we have the safety fair coming up and we've actually unfortunately had some fires and they've been out on several calls, so, super busy. Um, I left my note back about fire, anything else, highlight, good. Uh, Public Works, um, doing great, Mozart, roadside mowing, um, they are working on the culvert on River Road. Um, let's see, we have, uh, code enforcement, he has been super busy, we had a house on Bonny Eagle Road that was, um, taken down and we're working through several others, he is up a number of permits. Um, we have, uh, Zach helping get some much-needed grants for the church and for fire. Uh, we also happy to report that the, uh, school zone lights, we're working with Public Works, that they are all, um, in, so those were grant for the town too, so all of our, our schools, including, we worked with the town of, um, Buxton, so the middle school and the high school now have school zone lights, so if they're not fully in yet, they will be there in progress. And we just found out today, chief got, uh, we worked with the county, but we got an eighteen thousand dollar grant for wellness and, uh, the health of our firefighter, so kudos to that.
Awesome.
That's all I got.
That's all you got, great, uh, and before we go any further, I'd just like to make a quick announcement that as we go along tonight, for all council members as well, uh, and anybody that comes to the mic, could you please make sure you speak clearly into the mic, uh, some of our viewers have mentioned that, uh, sometimes it goes, uh, low and they can't hear the conversation, so if we could just make sure we use our mics tonight so that the community at home can hear us, uh, let's go into public hearings.
Sure, our only public hearing today is fifty-seven dash twenty-five amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter one eighty-one, land use, town avenue, street standards. The town of Standish hereby ordains that Chapter one eighty-one, land use, town avenue, street standards be and hereby is amended as follows, additions are underlined, deletions are struck out. Chapter one eighty-seven dash seven dot one, form-based code village districts, um, E, Standish Corner District Standards, three, town avenue TA standards, C, SCD, street space standards TA. Location width with, uh, distances, amenity zone, five feet both sides, on SCD street parking, eight feet, and then underline allowed, one side only, underlined, bike lane, five feet both sides, travel lanes, eleven feet, two lanes.
Great. Zach, do you want to add anything to that?
Just to clarify, it's, it's making the parking optional on one side of the town avenue streets. Um, and if the town, if the road doesn't have that, um, space for the parking, it, it obviously can't be parked on that street. It's primarily geared towards new, new roads.
Great, thank you, uh, any public comments on that? Seeing none, uh, any council comments?
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, could you clarify the meaning of amenity zone and on SCD street parking? Clarify the abbreviation SCD and what amenity zone is.
Yeah. The, uh, the SCD is the Standish Corner District, so it's the overall, the overall zoning district for the, for the form, you know, for the, for each of these districts, or the street types. The amenity zone is, the amenity zone is, I don't, um, if you give me one second, I can tell you more, but I, it's really, it's really just meant to be open space for, um, uh, plantings, things like that. Give me...
So it defines it as a portion of the public right-of-way typically adjacent to the sidewalk, but outside the pedestrian walking area. Nice and vague.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
Yeah, go. Um, so basically, uh, we wanted to look at this and allow, make it easier for some developers to not have such stringent parking standards, to allow them to do the developments they want to do and not have the financial cost of having mandatory on-street parking, so that it was more fiscally easier for them to do it. This is the, the main driver, make it easy for business to come to town.
Awesome. Any other council comments? Seeing none, can we get a roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yep.
Thomas?
Abstain.
And Watson?
Yes.
So passes, six yeses, one abstain, that closes the hearing. Moving on to committee reports, uh, I will start, uh, we had a appointments committee right before this uh, for one open, um, budget committee, uh, position, we had three applicants, uh, three, uh, very well, um, very, or very good applicants that, uh, had a lot of qualifications, uh, the, uh, committee decided to move forward with, uh, Mr. Robert McFerrin, uh, due to, um, he had, he manages a two-point-seven million dollar budget for the state of Maine, uh, came in with his spreadsheets and, you know, showed us his budget and everything that he does, and I think he could bring a lot to the, uh, town of Standish Budget Committee, uh, we all did, uh, and so, uh, that is who we moved forward. Are there any, uh, public comments?
Or do we open up to?
No, we don't, we just...
Oh yeah, we don't, I don't, my bad, anyway, um, and then, uh, there are, there was no personnel committee meeting this month. So, uh, we'll start down with Mr. Pomelo, uh, and go...
Capital meet, met, uh, this evening, and we'll be bringing some things forward in, in the meeting later.
You took it away from me.
There you go.
Took it away?
Yeah. Okay. Uh, the meeting is, uh, of the, a meeting of, uh, end of the month. And it's dealing with three people I know in Vips are involved with it, along with everybody else in the town. And it's something that you should go if you have never been, everything that's used in the town, it's, people love it, and they have it, and especially the kids. Fire trucks, when they get that ladder out there with somebody up on the top, it's always nice to see the right person.
They're gonna push me off.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Um, we are having the ordinance committee later, meeting later this month, and then finance met, um, yesterday, and, um, had a meeting with Scott, everything is running smoothly and well, and is going great as far as finances go.
Economic Development Committee has not met yet this month.
I do have a question, uh, besides my own reports, uh, for committee activity, I'd like to ask the appointment committee, uh, to clarify if, uh, today at a later date, uh, for the cemetery committee, I believe the number of appointments is more than one vacancy, if I understand the original structure, as it was first proposed, it would be both community members and town employee members as well as council members, and so there may be more than one vacancy, is that correct, or do you want to take time to research it?
Uh, I do remember that you brought that forward, and I had made an announcement if anyone was interested, uh, we did get one person, and I sent her, uh, her your email, I sent it to you via email.
I have spoken to her, and she's indicated she has an application as, as interested, so...
Yeah, I know that, uh, we'd love some staff participation, as I said, John's got some people going to training, so, depending on when it meets, we could have some staff input too.
Okay, thank you, so otherwise, uh, cemetery committee has not yet met, hoping to get additional members, uh, with respect to the, uh, transportation committee, we have not met, but I'd like to, uh, throw out a, something for discussion, maybe we might consider a council workshop, or maybe you think it's more suitable just for the transportation committee to address, and that would be, in the town of Leamington, for example, they do have a town-supported bus in the summertime that helps, uh, students that are food insecure get access to, um, the meals provided by the MSAD six school nutrition staff, and I'm wondering if, uh, part of the transportation, uh, issue might be to address that, and to consider what if, or how, uh, what it might cost, or if we want to, uh, have a, a bus made available by the town to facilitate, uh, children who are food insecure to get access to summer meals. And, not something to resolve now, but I'm just throwing it out, that I would propose that that's something I think that we might address.
We're working with GP Cog, did you see the advertisement we put out, Zach put out about transportation study?
I missed that, I will look for it.
Yeah, um, maybe Zach could send the email, we, we are in the process of working with them for some grant funding and see what the need is in our community.
Great, thank you. I have nothing else to report, thank you.
Great, thank you. Consent calendar?
There are no consent calendar items.
Excellent, unfinished business?
So we start with seventy-two dash twenty-five, um, amendments to the code of town of Standish to add Chapter one eighty-six. The town of Standish hereby ordains that Chapter one eighty-six be and hereby is added as follows, additions are underlined, deletions are struck out. Chapter one eighty-six, rent stabilization, uh, one eighty-six dash one purpose, the purpose of this ordinance is to address increasing rent, rental costs with the town, to stabilize and make more predictable future rent increases, and to provide landlords with fair and reasonable return on their investment. Eighty-six dash two definitions, the following words and phrases when used in this chapter have the meaning...
Wait, 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 reading?
Was that Pomelo?
Mr. Christie, second, Mr. Pomelo, all in favor? Ananamous? Zach, would you like to add anything or talk about this?
Uh, sure, so I think, um, it's important to note that, um, staff and legal counsel and, and everyone agrees that moving this ordinance as-is, as it is, would not be the best thing to do, um, because it does exempt units under, it exempts, um, everything under ten units, and therefore, the only, the only, um, kind of developments that, that staff knows about in the town of Standish with over eleven units are the mobile home parks. Given the recent legislation around mobile home parks, um, we, this, this ordinance would be in direct conflict with those new state laws, so my recommendation is, if council wants to explore a rent control ordinance, uh, someone should make a motion to send it back to ordinance committee for, to, you know, for further revisions, uh, and to make it consistent with those new state laws, uh, if that motion fails, then it, it would make sense that this, a motion to move this ordinance forward would also fail. So, that's my recommendation, so, um, yeah, let me know if you have any, any questions.
Um, so, could you just, just to clarify, make sure, your, your recommendation is to do one more time?
Recommendation, given that this ordinance would, would conflict with the new state laws passed, if council does want to explore an, an, what essentially would be a new ordinance, um, someone, we should make a motion to send it back to ordinance committee for, for ordinance committee to work on, and bring forth a new ordinance that would, that would be consistent with those state laws. So if that, if, if that motion fails, then, then a motion to move this ordinance forward should also fail, but...
Great, thank you. Are there any public, uh, comments? Seeing none, are there any, yes, Mr. Pomelo?
Yes, as a member of the ordinance committee, uh, we're really, uh, working hard to help, obviously, punch your trailer park out of a little bit of a jam, but with the state now involved, I think it's LD, it's seventeen twenty-three, they're looking at it up there, I think, uh, at this point, uh, I would want to vote no on this, and, and, uh, if we think we need to bring it back to the ordinance committee in three or four months, then we could do so, but I think at this point, we should probably vote no and, and let the state take care of it.
And those laws have passed, just to clarify.
Yes, yes, sev- they'll take effect in September.
I have a quick question, and then I'll go to Lisa, um, so you're on the ordinance committee, um, and Zach had said that he, he made a, a suggestion, you're suggesting that we vote no, he suggested maybe we make...
He suggested we vote no also, is that correct?
Well, or to make, or to make a motion to send it to, back to the ordinance committee.
Make a motion to send it to ordinance, and if, and if that, you know, if you got, if, if council does want to work on a new ordinance.
Okay, so, if we, then, I guess my question would be for you, if we all voted down and say no, and we don't make that motion, it just dies?
Yeah, and then you should make a send a motion.
And then make the motion to send it to ordinance committee.
First make the motion to send it to ordinance, and then if that fails, make a motion to, to, you know, if this, this shouldn't move forward, you know, make a motion to move this forward.
Excuse me.
Inseparably, that should fail.
Okay, thank you.
Um, LD, again, LD seventeen twenty-three applies to the trailer parks, which is great, um, with the comprehensive plan coming out and the, uh, excitement for high-density housing, that's gonna bring a lot of multi-unit apartment buildings in. I think this should go back to ordinance to be made consistent with LD seventeen twenty-three and include those apartment buildings so that it's fair across town. Trailer parks, um, have rent control apartment complexes with fifty apartment units in it, should also have the same type of rent control, and, and if, because it's over eleven units, is where I'm going, so I think it should go back to ordinance and be reworked a bit.
Jesus, I've been here so many times.
Any other council comments?
I have one.
Mr. Deacon?
Thank you, uh, given that the state of Maine, uh, has done a study on housing to indicate there's a critical shortage of housing, uh, I, I think it's important for us to keep this in mind, and although it's certainly appropriate to consider what's happening at the state level, I don't think that we should just stop at the local level from doing anything, I think it would be appropriate to have it go back to the ordinance committee for consideration, uh, because of the simple fact that housing is such a, at a critical juncture across the state, including in our community, that we should consider any way we can to help keep housing affordable and to address the housing needs of our community. So I would urge the council to send it back to the ordinance committee for consideration and review in relation to the state laws and the needs of the community, otherwise, thank you.
Thank you for that, uh, any other council comments? Seeing none, um, is there a motion, do I hear a motion to send it back to ordinance?
I'll make that motion, send it back to ordinance.
A second, so, we got the motion, Mr. Strubing? And let's have a roll call.
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
No.
Deacon?
Yes.
Uh, Pomelo?
No.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Abstain.
And Watson?
No.
Alright, that is another tie, that's a tie vote, so...
Can I, can I make a motion that we allow Jen Thomas to speak on this or vote on this, because the vote that she makes now has no direct financial contribution to her in any way?
I would second what Jen, I think Jen would vote as she should, I mean, she's a counselor, we should, because she does business with this group, uh, every time something like this comes up, I don't think Jen should be denied her vote.
Are, are any of, are any of her clients related to any of the apartment complexes that are coming in?
No, but...
But this, this vote is just to send it back to ordinance, so I don't think it's really much of a conflict, because it's just saying, hey, let's go back and relook at it and talk it over, I don't think your abstaining or your vote really influences it one way, like, you're not making a vote on the final thing, you're just sending it back to ordinance or not, when, if that doesn't pass, then we'll vote on this as it is tonight, and then, then you would probably want to abstain from that one.
I mean, I still think I need to abstain, because...
And that's fair, if that's how you feel?
My firm represents both of the trailer parks involved here, um, I represent many of the landlords involved, and I fear that my vote is tainted because of that.
That's fine, that's fair.
Excellent, um...
Is it allowed to ask why you just want to scratch it instead of sending it back to ordinance to be reworked? Is that a fair question?
I mean, um, I think...
I don't know if that's allowed.
It's not, it's not...
No, I don't really think we, we can get into, like, why a council member or council person is gonna vote a certain way. I would say we just, we just vote, uh, the way we feel that we need to vote, and we move on from that. Um, where it did, it was a tie to send it back to ordinance, it doesn't pass, correct? So, and we would vote on it as is.
Um, yeah, so tie votes usually move to unfinished business on the next regular meeting.
Is that for, just a regular order?
You're right, that's just for a regular order, so...
Because that was a motion, so it doesn't pass.
Yep, now we can go ahead and vote as a whole.
On the order as a whole, so if we can have a roll call for the, the order as it is written.
Gardner?
No.
Uh, Christie?
No.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
No.
Strubing?
Nope.
Thomas?
Abstain.
And Watson?
No.
No, alright, so we have one, one yes, and one, two, three, uh, one yes, one, two, three, four, five no's, and one abstain. So it fails.
I have a related motion to suggest, if I may.
Very failed.
So it fails.
Yep, it failed.
Uh, motion fails, um, and you had a comment?
I, I'd like to suggest, uh, perhaps with the, uh, assistance of the chair, that the town, uh, council have a workshop on housing, rent control, the whole issue of, of housing and, uh, the need for housing in our community, and whether it's the ordinance committee or the workshop, that I think there's a need to discuss this, or at least to discuss the implications of the state laws, and how they may affect our community. Housing is a critical issue across the state and in our community, and just doing nothing and letting other actors do things, I think is the wrong approach to take, I think we should do something, so I, I would suggest that the, uh, chair consider holding a workshop on this matter.
Um, and, thank you for your thoughts, we'll definitely, um, we can definitely, the, uh, town manager will take those thoughts into consideration, but, uh, it's really a planning board, uh, matter, um, and so, uh, I know we, as council members, can go to the planning board meeting and bring that up and pitch that idea to them, and hopefully, they can move that idea forward.
If I made the planning board and could meet in conjunction with the town council as part of the workshop, could they not?
We could invite them to a workshop, but it's, or they could invite us to one of their workshops, but, um, with that said, we're gonna, we are gonna move on to keep everything moving, uh, next amendment.
Sixty-nine dash twenty-five amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter one eighty-one, land use regarding Orchard Road Solar Contract Zone. The town of Standish hereby ordains that Appendix D attached to Section one eighty-one dash eleven dot twenty of the Code of Ordances be and hereby repealed as its entirety and replaced by Appendix D attached here too.
Make a motion to wait the reading?
Go ahead, wait a second. Mr. Christie, seconds?
Yes.
Can we have, uh, all in favor? Of, unanimous? Any public comments on this? Seeing none?
Zach, do you want to speak to it?
Zach, would you like to say anything?
Just quickly on this...
Where it did, it was a tie to send it back to ordinance, it doesn't pass, correct? And we would vote on it as is.
Yes, so tie votes usually move to unfinished business on the next regular meeting.
Is that for just a regular order?
You're right, that's just for a regular order, so.
Because that was a motion, so it doesn't pass.
Yep, now we can go ahead and vote as a whole.
On the order as a whole, so if we can have a roll call for the, the order as it is written.
Gardner?
No.
Christie?
No.
Deacon?
Yes.
Parmalo?
No.
Strubing?
Nope.
Thomas?
Abstain.
And Watson?
No.
No. All right, so we have one, one yes and one, two, three, one yes, one, two, three, four, five no's and one abstain.
I have a related motion to suggest, if I may.
Very failed.
So it fails.
Yep, it failed.
Motion fails. And you had a comment?
I, I'd like to suggest perhaps with the assistance of the chair that the town council have a workshop on housing, rent control, the whole issue of, of housing and the need for housing in our community. And whether it's the ordinance committee or the workshop, that I think there's a need to discuss this or at least to discuss the implications of the state laws and how they may affect our community. Housing is a critical issue across the state and in our community and just doing nothing and letting other actors do things, I think is the wrong approach to take. I think we should do something, so I, I would suggest that the chair consider holding a workshop on this matter.
And thank you for your thoughts, we'll definitely, we can definitely, the town manager will take those thoughts into consideration, but it's really a planning board matter. And so I know we as council members can go to the planning board meeting and bring that up and pitch that idea to them and hopefully they can move that idea forward.
If I made the planning board and could meet in conjunction with the town council as part of the workshop, could they not?
We could invite them to a workshop, but it's, or they could invite us to one of their workshops. With that said, we're gonna, we are gonna move on to keep everything moving. Next amendment.
Sixty-nine dash twenty-five amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter 181 Land Use Regarding Orchard Road Solar Contract Zone. The town of Standish hereby ordains that Appendix D attached to Section 181-11.20 of the Code of Ordinances be and hereby repealed as its entirety and replaced by Appendix D attached here too.
Do I hear a second? Mr. Christie, seconds?
Yes.
Can we have all in favor? All unanimous? Any public comments on this? Seeing none.
Zach, do you want to speak to it?
Zach, would you like to say anything?
Just quickly on this, um, the, there were three minor changes suggested at the last meeting, those have all made it in here. So the removal of inter alia on page one, correction of the acronym on page two, and then specifying thirty days in the termination on page three. And so I would just, to make it, to make it cleaner, not to make it more complicated, but I would recommend that you make, a motion is made to accept those three changes before voting on the actual document, just so that, that that's on the record. And then, you know, voting on the document after. But that's, unless the applicant wishes, if council is wanting to hear a quick presentation again, I don't know.
No, I don't think we need to right now. Are you, are you good?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Before we, before we get to that motion, I ask for public comments, any council comments? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to accept the changes?
I'll make a motion that we accept, make the, accept the changes as written.
Mr. Watson?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? Unanimous? And we take a roll call.
All right, we have Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Parmalo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
And Wat, uh, Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
This is unanimous. So passes.
Do we need to make a motion to accept now, approve this, because that was just a-
Oh, was it?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to accept it?
We just do another roll call on that.
Oh, just make it.
As, as changed, as changed, accepting the amendment as changed now.
As changed, all right, so roll call.
Yeah, sure, it's Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Parmalo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Passes again. Great.
Next up is seventy-one dash twenty-five, waived bid process for purchase of new subcompact tractor. This was postponed from the seventy-eight twenty-five meeting. Give you guys a minute.
Good evening, everybody.
Sorry, I was just giving them a minute to leave, let me just go ahead and keep reading, okay?
One second, one second.
Sorry about that. Where Section 302-F of the Standish Charter requires a competitive bid process for transactions exceeding three thousand five hundred in value unless so waived by the town council and whereas the parks-
I'd like to waive the reading.
Second. Have a motion to waive the reading with a second, all in favor?
I think it's important that this be read, so that the residents understand.
Absolutely, yeah.
We will continue reading.
Yeah, whereas Section 302-F of the Standish Charter requires a competitive bid process for transactions exceeding three thousand five hundred in value unless so waived by the town council and whereas the Parks and Recreation Department has investigated various purchase options for a new tractor and has located a new one that meets the town's needs, now be it ordered that the bidding requirement regarding the purchase of subcompact tractor item hereby waived due to source well governmental bidding already taking place and further ordered that a tractor be purchased from MB Tractor and Equipment at an amount not to exceed seventy-nine thousand as recommended by the Capital Improvements Committee with sixty-nine thousand coming from Parks and Recreation capital funded through recreation, impact fees and the remaining funds paid for by Public Works Department operating budget. Further order that the town manager is authorized on behalf of the town to execute related contract documents.
Point of order. Mr. Chair. The, the bid, I'm going to be making an amendment on this bid to haul implement company for the price not to exceed seventy-five thousand four fifty-six. And I can explain that now or we can talk about it later. We will be making amendment to this order.
Second.
I heard second, but I didn't catch who it was.
Uh, Mr. Christie? Mr. Christie. We-
Made a second now, you want me to talk upon it now? We normally don't-
We already have a second. Then we should vote on it, right, if there's a second?
Let's vote on the amendment, I guess.
So I would-
You want me to speak on the amendment first, guys?
I would, I would like you to speak on it.
I'm going to speak on the amendment.
Yes.
Okay, so-
Did you say seventy-four thousand?
Seventy-five thousand four fifty-six. We had extremely close bidding on this tractor, this, I went over the, this for three hours today trying to decide which tractor was better and which tractor wasn't. Our rec department did an excellent job in bringing forward, I mean, this here is all the paperwork, I mean, it was books. Went back and forth on it, the John Deere was better than this and the Kubota was a little better than that. And honestly, they're both local companies with, Hall's been here seventy years in Wyndham and MB's just down the street in Gorham. So basically, we, I'm going to be honest with you, Hall was three thousand dollars cheaper roughly and we couldn't, we couldn't figure out what to do, so we flipped a coin. And I hated to do it that way, but that was, it was so close on what, what the tractors were that we actually flipped a coin and, and Hall Implement won the toss. It's kind of maybe not a good way to do it, but we have two excellent companies in Standish or Stand, located around Standish within twenty minutes of us and both brought in excellent pieces of equipment. And so that's how we come up with MB Tractor. Both of these tractors are John Deere Kubota excellent machines. We couldn't have got a better bidding process going and we struggled with, with this in, in our, our capital. So that's where it's at, I, I don't know what else.
Great, well, thank you for that clarification and explanation. So we did have a motion to change it to haul implement at no more than seventy-five thousand four hundred fifty-six. We did have a second, so if we can all have a vote on the motion, all in favor?
Can I just ask a question?
There's a question, yes, okay.
Should we add the model number of the tractor in there?
Uh, we can, it would be, if I can find it.
It would be the-
Forty-six-six.
Four oh six six R.
Four, uh, L, yeah, yeah, four oh six six R, I guess, yes. And, and let me, a little information on this tractor, this is a joint tractor that's being bought for the Public Works and the Rec Department. They're going to share this tractor, we're going to have to buy two tractors and we ended up, we're going to share this tractor between two departments, which is what we should be thinking outside the box forever when we're looking at buying big pieces of equipment. Our impact fees will cover sixty-nine thousand of this tractor and John's going to cover, I think, the rest, is that correct?
Ten thousand five hundred is coming from Public Works operating budget that was approved last year for a flail mower that will be attached to the tractor. The rest is being paid by impact fees.
So th, this is quite impressive that council put this impact fee together and now we're already seeing us saving sixty-nine thousand dollars and you having two different departments in Standish using the same piece of equipment, so.
Okay.
That, that's a little bit of history on it too.
Great, thank you. Before we get too far away from the motion and the second, I would like to vote on that and then we'll open it up for conversation.
Okay.
Sound good? So all in favor?
Can you remind me what the motion is?
The motion is to change from MB Tractor to haul implement of a, no more than seventy-five thousand five, uh, four hundred fifty-six thou, uh, dollars and we do have the number for the tractor that added as well.
Thank you.
That's for the four oh six.
Yes, sir, so a yes vote would be to allow to switch to haul, if you say no, then I, then looks like you want to stay with MB, I guess, instead of amending the, the order. So we are making a mo, the motion was to amend the order to haul implement. All in favor? That is unanimous, we will go with haul. Right now, first I'd like to open up to public comments, Matt, would you like to speak on this?
Well, Phil spoke very beautifully, good evening, Matthew Duplessis, Parks and Rec Director. He pretty much covered the whole gambit of it, we, you know, we worked pretty hard on getting this information together so that everybody, you know, the counselors were, you know, got the bulk of the details of what we get and what Phil said in regard to, so close on all of them. We're just going to be super happy to have a tractor that's going to be utilized, you know, quite a bit and it's going to save us from having to move along with the rental aspect, which is the previous way we were doing it. And it's also amazing to be able to share with, with John for the, for the attachment of the flail mower, so we're super excited to have it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
I wanted, Matt.
Do you have a question?
Yes, not a question, just I want to say thank you. I know last month you brought us some stuff and it was a little bit of a debacle there, but this time you really knocked it out of the park with the stuff you brought us and the spreadsheet of the details and everything's doing good work.
My apologies for my, what I brought to the table and I make sure that I'm, that everything buttoned up.
You made up for it this month, that's for sure.
I appreciate that, Phil.
Great, thanks, Matt. Other, before we move to council comments, we're going to open it up to public comments. Seeing none, we will go to council comments. Lisa?
Um, Matt, the, moving to the John Deere four oh six six R, it says the warranty information is on page fourteen and fifteen. The only thing I see there that I think is a warranty is on page fifteen, standard, I think that's manufacturer warranty for the transmission.
Yeah, it would have been on the back of your bid sheet, if you guys have the bid sheet, on the back of the bid sheet is the warranties for both.
Okay, yeah, right here.
It was with us somewhere, I saw it earlier.
Oh, it's, it's right here, yep.
So those are included?
Those are the warranties given by each of the different companies, Kubota and John Deere, for pretty much all of their tractors.
Okay, and then we, we're not doing the whole tractor bumper to bumper for the thirty-two forty-six extra?
That's all included in.
Okay, perfect.
That's all included, whatever, the, the, those are listed down are all included in whatever, that tractor that we're purchasing.
Thank you.
So that's in the seventy-five thousand?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Deacon, yep.
Thank you. Some months ago, I was at one of the capital improvement meetings, I believe it was, where you were first discussing and having it shared between departments, which is a great thing, as Mr. Parmalo said. I'm just concerned, I'd want to make it clear that, you know, this is an expensive piece of equipment, where is it going to be housed? So where it's going to be shared, how is it, does it need to be kept out of the elements? How is it going to be protected so it can be kept for long use?
I would say the plan moving forward with the tractor as it is coming out of the recreational impact fee, we will probably house the tractor in our shop, which is currently the one we built over here on the end of town hall, it'll be housed inside. And then, you know, when John needs to utilize it, we'll coordinate accordingly. If he needs to take it out for the guys, we'll, we'll pivot for what we need to do. So just communication between John and I, but it will be most likely housed in our shop right over here on the corner.
And who will operate the tractor, if it's being used by Public Works, will they provide the operator or will you provide the operator?
John will be, when he takes control of the tractor, will, his, his employers will be running that. When I'm using it for the parks, the park foreman will be mostly behind the wheel and when he's not available, you know, myself.
Thank you.
Are there any, any other comments? Great, roll call.
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Parmalo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses, passes unanimous? Moving on, seventy-five twenty-five?
Yep, seventy-five dash twenty-five, town council appointments to various boards and committees and the announcement of town council chair committee appointments and standing committee appointments. Last meeting, we bifurcated this order by approving Budget Committee member Christopher Finley and then Saco River Joint Cable TV member alternate and Saco River Community TV Board of Directors alternate, Christopher Strubing. And then the substitute is this bottom portion where is further order that the town council chairs appointments to the following committees, town council standing committees are approved by the town council. Board Committee Cemetery Exploratory Committee, Robert Deacon, through June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Public Safety Committee Council Rep, Terry, Terry Christie, June thirty, twenty twenty-six. GPCOG PACS Policy Board Council Seat, Lisa Strubing, June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Old Red Church Liaison Counselor Seat, Robert Deacon, June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Watchet Lake Liaison Council Seat, Robert Deacon, June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Appointments would be Gardner, the Chair, Parmalo and Watson. Capital Improvements, Parmalo Chair, Strubing, Watson. Economic Development, Thomas Chair, Strubing, Parmalo. Finance, Strubing Chair, Thomas, Watson. Ordinance, Watson Chair, Parmalo, Thomas. Personnel, Gardner Chair, Christie, Deacon. PWD Steering, Christie Chair, Deacon Gardner. Transportation Committee, Deacon Chair, Christie, Thomas.
Great. Are there any public comments? Great, seeing none. Council comments, and I think I'll start. I would, I'd just like to say that I still didn't receive some emails, but I did try to give everybody at least one of the committees that they, that they said they would be interested in serving on and we made some changes this year and just hopefully we can have really good meetings and if you have any questions, feel free to come see me. Any other coun, council comments?
Thank you, I appreciate all the work it takes in trying to appoint people to committees and spread the work around. It's, it's not an easy effort and I thank the chair for what it's done. I just raise again, the historical commission is a, is a entity that was created by the town and we're, it's still, it's not listed here. It's never, it seems to be just ignored, we ought to just dispose of it or have some study or action taken to formally decide what to do with the historical commission.
We met with our town's attorney and we are in the process of doing that, it's just not that quick as making it an agenda item, so we are, that will be brought to you in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
No.
Roll call.
Yes, I wasn't sure if we were making an amendment to add an appointment, one of the interviews from earlier to it or?
Mr. McFerrin?
Uh, to the Budget Committee? Yes.
I'll make a motion that we add Robert McFerrin to the at-large Budget Committee seat.
Second. So, all in favor? Seven?
What's the term expiration for him?
He has to, he's going to be through the June election, he's going to have to run for election on that.
Now we would vote on the order as amended with Mr. McFerrin on there. If we could get roll call, please.
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Parmalo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yep.
Wat, Thomas?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
All right, the seven yeses.
So passes? Great, we can move on to new business, seventy-six dash twenty-five?
Okay, sure, so, yep, seventy-six dash twenty-five, town of Standish orders of town council authorizing issue of two million two hundred nine thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars principal amount of bonds and notes in anticipation of such bonds. Be it voted, ordered and ordained that the town council of the town of Standish, the town, as follows. Section one, authority to issue bonds, one dot one pursuant to the town charter including sections two oh three L and eight oh one, section fifty-seven seventy-two of the title thirty A of the main revised statutes and approval of questions one through five of the warrant for the annual town meeting referendum duly called and held on June ten, twenty twenty-five by the voters of the town. The treasurer of the town and the majority of the town council are authorized to issue general obligation bonds and notes in anticipation thereof in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed two million nine hundred two thousand three hundred thirty-one collectively the bonds to finance the projects listed below. Collectively, the projects and the proceeds of the bond, including investment earning, earnings thereon and any bond premium and hereby appropriated to pay costs of the project. and hereby appropriated to pay costs of the projects, project, public safety.
Motion to waive the reading, second.
We have a motion in a second. All in fa, uh?
Could we just read section one so that people understand the department and the amounts?
One second. So it has to be unanimous anyway, right? So if you're asking of us to keep reading, we will read, how far down would you like us to read?
I'll make a new motion when she gets to section two, how about that?
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Sure. Public Safety expended, capital expenditures, a new ambulance, cardiac monitors, hose and nozzle replacement and a ram truck for the amount up to seven hundred eighty-five thousand. General administration capital expenditures, building and boiler repairs at the town hall, door security connections at the town hall and parking lot lighting at the town hall, up to one hundred ninety-six thousand, three forty-two. And then we have Parks and Recreation capital expenditures, a subcompact tractor, a heavy-duty pickup truck with plow and dump body, a pre-made storage-rich memorial and phase two of Johnson Field project, up to four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Public Works capital expenditures, a truck with plow gear, the salt shed roof and a chipper, up to four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Highway and road capital expenditures, pavement maintenance to the following town roads, Apple Lane, Busky Boulevard, Johnson Road, Carey Farms Drive, Mass Pine Circle, McGill Fern, Randall Road, South Ridge Drive, Town Pine Circle, Ward's Cove Road, Wild Ridge Road and Windy Circle for up to one million, ten thousand, nine hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Motion to waive reading?
Motion in a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Scott, do you wanna highlight anything? His finance.
This order just allows me to borrow in anticipation of the bonds that will, the issue will come out in November, but we need to purchase items before then. So this gives me the funds to pay for those items.
Great. We're gonna do public comments first and then we'll go to the council. Are there any public comments on this? No public comments. Are there any council comments, Ms. Thomas?
The, under Parks and Recreation capital expenditures, the subcompact tractor, is that the one that we just approved? And that will be covered by? Impact fees. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Public expenditures, you know, spending the public's money is always something that's important. It's a purpose of government to take care of each other in the community, but we want to be careful in doing it. I believe it came out in the town budget that our overall bonding was at a very modest, or you might even say low level, so that in issuing these bonds for these amounts, it's well below our amount that we can potentially bond for the town. And is probably, we are still at a relatively low or modest level of total bonding for the town. So even though we are making these expenses, we're being prudent to steward the use of town funds by not spending unnecessarily and we have a low level of bonding. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Do you know roughly what our percent is of our total bonding potential?
I think one percent.
One percent. So that's exceptionally low, and I, I wanna thank the town employees who have been working on purchasing this and other equipment to use, dual-use equipment by multiple town agencies. All of that helps us keep the bonding low, and I, I wanna thank you for that. I do have a question, though, about building repairs. Does that address the roof or leakage or condition of the town hall as opposed to roof leaks? What does that meant to address when it says building repairs?
All of the above. The building itself, the roof, any, any repairs that need to be made on the outside, columns, et cetera. Mostly the roof.
Is, are we, can you say with some confidence that that's a realistic number? I'm just worried that it could potentially be more.
I couldn't, I couldn't say.
It was not the entire roof.
Right.
The entire roofing system. We had just this part look that was leaking.
Okay, and does it include painting of the exterior of the building to?
No.
Does not. Do we have any plans to do that?
That wasn't looked at as of yet.
I see, okay.
Part of, part of the roof repair, though, was to do the outside soffit edges where a lot of the rotten
I see.
is coming off. So that was just the higher up part that will be, when we get the quote for the roof, they did include that.
Okay.
That soffit stuff to make sure that was taken care of.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. I appreciate that you're diligent and not being so focused you can't see everything else that's going on. Thank you.
Yes.
What, what must be purchased before November to keep the town from shutting down?
Well, I don't know that the town's gonna shut down.
Yeah, it was a little drastic exaggeration, but.
I know that the new ambulance has a down payment.
John Cross Public Works, we had previously done a plow truck bid subject to a passing in November. Payment is due in September for that, and that's almost three hundred thousand.
Okay.
That, for that.
Okay. The reason I ask is when you borrow for the bonds, there's an interest that has to be paid. And since we can't pay those loans back ahead of time, how much is it gonna cost us to not pay for some things that need a first payment out of what we have and wait until November when the money becomes available?
Well, the interest rate is five percent, seven, nine percent.
On two million dollars, almost three million dollars. Yeah. Yeah, so I mean.
I won't be, I won't be borrowing for like the pavement, because we won't be doing that until next summer. So that's a million dollars right there that will be borrowed. There's seventy-five thousand for a chipper.
Mm-hmm.
That we don't need.
Right.
So we won't borrow for that.
Okay, so.
Three hundred thousand for the, the second phase of Johnson Field. We, I don't know that we know that we've gotten the, gotten the grant yet, so. That's not until summer project, so that would be borrowed.
So what's here is worst-case scenario?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Cause I'm concerned about five percent interest if we, if we can wait. But I'm also a bit of a tightwad, so. Thank you for answering my question.
Any other comments? Roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Six yeses, one no.
So passes?
Yep.
All right, moving on.
So seventy-seven dash twenty-five, waive bid process and award bid for purchase of fire attack lines, nozzles and appliances, whereas section three oh two F of the Standish Charter requires a competitive bid process for transactions exceeding three thousand five hundred in value unless so waived by the town council. Now be it ordered that the bidding requirement regarding the purchase of fire attack lines, nozzles and appliances hereby waived due to specific needs of Sol Source and further order that the attached bid from Harrison Schrader Enterprises doing business as comp buys for fire hose equipment as described in bid specifications is hereby accepted with a cost not to exceed two hundred twenty-six thousand dollars, one hundred, sorry, two hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents for the project and further order that the town manager is authorized on behalf of town to execute related contract documents.
Let's go to Mr. Pomelo.
I'm gonna probably refer this to our fire chief. We're gonna waive the bid process because there aren't anyone that wanted to bid this. We went out through a source and I'm getting this right. This was because it's compatible with what other towns have in the area also, this equipment, so if you wanna speak on that, Chief.
Chief?
Yeah, so actually, can you hear me? The next item was more on the lines of that. This was kinda bid, well, it was bid through, the pricing came off a government. We just didn't send out a separate RFP. We took the stuff off the government site. I did kinda write a little synopsis about the whole thing. This is a project that started back in twenty twenty with an eleven-member committee. We started out with a conversation about the wear and tear we were putting on our pumps that are on the fire trucks due to the high RPMs we had to run the engines at to get adequate water flow during fires. It's transitioned into the need to start replacing our fire hoses and nozzles, some as old as nineteen eighty-two. Over the next year and a half, we participated with Gorm, partnered with Gorm, Westbrook and Wyndham to bring in different manufacturers to demo their hoses, nozzles and appliances. We did this with multiple manufacturer representatives on site. We flowed thousands of gallons of water. We weighed the hoses with and without water in them, trying to find the lighter one for safety and whatnot for us. We documented all the data from that, from each appliance used, including flow rates, pressures, friction loss. Also during the timeframe, a few of us on several occasions traveled to different locations and different trade shows to explore every option available, even as far away as Indianapolis, just to make sure what we were proposing hit every benchmark that we had set as a committee to ensure the safety, the value, the threads we needed, the longevity of the product that we chose, not only for the members in our pumps, but also for the citizens in the town, of the town that we protect. Standish has always had a national standard thread for over forty years, however, all the towns around us have changed threads to iron pipe because it's a little cheaper and whatnot and easier to use. So that was leaving us constantly purchasing adapters to connect our hose to theirs and vice versa. It may sound easy, but when someone's house is burning or they are trapped in the fire and you need to add another fifty feet of hose to reach them, but you have to waste time to find another adapter, the outcome is not, may not be desirable. We tried two separate occasions to obtain this hose through a federal grant with no luck. We haven't replaced much that we've had over the last few years, knowing we were gonna, we were trying to get the grant and replace it all at once with the different threads. That's why it's in the capital plan this year, and we're not quite at the dire need of replacing it, but we're not far off. So this is, could be very beneficial to us, and I did have, I do have some examples of the different things we found. But this was the best bang for our buck, and it's, there's a lot of good key features to it that'll also help potentially save lives of our own people at times.
Thanks. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, council comments?
I do wanna say, when I saw this particular order, I clenched up a bit. But after listening to the explanation that Rob gave and the, all of the trucks are gonna be refitted, we're gonna have spare equipment, everything that we're getting is gonna let us work with the other towns quickly and rapidly. The equipment that's going on some of the trucks matches what's around town, so it's quick plug-and-play kinda stuff. And just, just for that, we can work with the other towns easily. Yeah, I was happily surprised.
Yes, I wanna thank the public safety, the chief and our firefighters for all the work they do and certainly having the necessary equipment really makes their job easier and more effective, and I support that. I just wanna clarify, there are a couple items, they're expensive items. I think it's page four, it says where things such as the nozzle one point five NPSH orange and OPG spinning laser etched Standish, it's eleven hundred eighty-seven dollars. Some of the items are being etched Standish. I gather that's because when you're doing mutual aid, sometimes it's hard to keep track of things. It's an expensive item, and so you feel the need to mark those particular items. Is there any concern about, and again, I don't want to tail the wag the dog here, but all of the other, I mean, mutual aid is critical to all the fire departments around Maine and everywhere else. But is there any concern about any of the other couplings and things being lost or misplaced? Or do you think it's only those expensive items that we should be concerned about?
Every, every, every piece of hose is gonna come marked with, it has its own barcode on it. And also it'll be printed on the hose, Standish, and obviously it has the date of manufacture on it. We did, we did a large group purchase through a grant, and it was, it was over a million dollars with a few of the neighboring towns. And it was all for a large diameter hose that we used for the, just for the, from the fire hydrants. Each town had a different color hose and each town has their own labeling on every single one of them, but they're all the same thing compatible.
Great.
So it's all kind of included, so. But yes, every, every piece in this thing right here will have Standish etched or printed on it.
Well, I, I thank you and the other departments from the other towns, too, for thinking about that. I mean, we're all trying to help each other, but let's keep track of our own stuff. And again, I appreciate the, a lot of the advanced work that people don't see that you do in trying to safeguard the town's expenditures and funds and equipment, and I wanna thank you again for all of that work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pomelo?
I got one thing that really sold me on this, and you know, you talked about capital, about going into buildings, burning buildings and trying to get out. Would you explain what these new hoses will do for our firefighters in buildings?
They, they call them easy-out couplings. Basically, whenever anybody goes to the firefighter one academy, they kinda teach you the, which end of the hose is the female end and the male end, so if you're in a fire and you can't see, obviously it's dark, you can, you get lost, you can follow the hose out, but you need to know which direction to go. And half the time, it's coiled up three times around itself and going in a different room and whatnot. Every one of these couplings not only has that same feature, but it has high-visibility arrows pointing towards the exit of every, cause we all, everybody has a flashlight, so you can at least see, even if it's an inch from your face, you'd be able to see it. But they light it very well, and they're all the way around the coupling, so it's just another added feature that if somebody gets lost, and it has happened before, this will kinda take the panic hopefully away from them and the anxiety, and they can at least see, all right, if I keep going this direction. They're not trying to feel around in the dark for which end of the hose to actually follow. They can just look and see, so.
I was just gonna say the same thing. I thought that was an awesome feature, so I wanted to let everybody know that that was, going on the hoses is pretty cool. It's amazing.
Any other comments?
No, I guess I, so I'd like to make an amendment to this to add, well, it's two hundred fifty thousand is what would be, we targeted for, but it's two twenty-six, but I think we still have to waive the reading, is that correct? Waive the competitive bidding read on this, or don't we? Cause we're waiving the competitive bidding on this, I think we still have to vote on that, don't we? Or do we?
Well, that is the order. The order does say to purchase that the bidding requirement regarding the purchase of fire attack lines, nozzles and appliances hereby waived due to specific needs.
Okay, as long as we're.
So that's what.
Written in there, that's all I wanna make sure, that we are waiving the bid process, and as long as it's written in there, which it has, and we're happy with that.
So we will take a roll call for the order to waive the specific needs to of Sol Source. Roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
So passes?
Seventy-eight dash twenty-five, acceptance of street name Amelia Lane. Order that the following street name as submitted by a property owner is accepted by the town council as required by the provisions of chapter two fifty-two dash twenty-three of the Standish Town Code. Amelia Lane, a private road that will be located on tax map three, lot fifty-two, which is off of Cape Road between Saco and Chelsea Drive.
Any public comments? Council comments? Roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
All right, seventy-nine dash twenty-five, emergency ordinance authorizing expenditure for purchase of household waste compactor. Whereas the town of Standish operates a transfer station that accepts, among other things, deposits of household trash and waste from its residents and taxpayers. And whereas the town's transfer station uses its existing household waste compactor to compact approximately sixty-five tons of household waste per year, per week, making this piece of equipment vital to the town's public works and public health operations.
Wait the reading, please.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? John, would you like to come up and speak about this, please?
I'm not sure if you'd like to make the motion first to say which one we want to go with, or? Or you want me to just explain?
Yeah, why don't you explain it out, and then we'll make the motion?
So, and starting in the beginning month of July, the household waste compactor, which is in the building that you throw your household waste into, the compactor cylinder, which is about a foot and a half in diameter, started leaking severely. So I contacted our local representative who does our maintenance. Our current compactor is a McLean, they no longer make McLeans, and he could not find any parts for it. So we looked at other options, what some of the options was to have a custom cylinder made, but that means we would take the machine out of service for extended period of time while the part's being made. And, because they would need the old part to do that, so we'd take it out of service, and we'd have to ship uncompacted trash, which is very expensive to that. So we looked at other options, we looked at, I looked at a refurbished machine that he had for sale, we looked at new machines. The new machine pricing is using Sourcewell, so it is governmental pricing for that. For that, we also talked about the need of the town, so currently we only have a sixty-inch door opening. I don't know if you've ever been there, when the trailer's being changed, and you see the hopper like very, very full, it bridges. And so when you go to start the machine again, the trash won't, won't fall in. So we talked about going to a larger trash, trash compactor to an eighty-inch door to be able to handle the need as we're changing the trailer, so that doesn't happen for that. So in the capital committee, there was determined that we would go with the one thousand HD with an eighty-inch door, which is again Sourcewell pricing, ten to twelve week delivery time from tomorrow. It should take roughly three to four days to change, so there might be an extra day that the transfer station might have to be closed, just so you're aware, while we're changing that. But hopefully it'll be minimal impact for when that comes.
How old is the unit we have right now?
It was put in ninety-two.
Ninety-two. Obviously, this is the most critical thing we have in our transfer station. With that down, it means we have to load trash into trucks and truck into Portland. And they did have a used unit that we could have got for, I think, a hundred and six thousand. I think the committee, capital committee decided we'd go with the one seventy-six and get the new unit. It'd be ten to twelve weeks out, so we gotta hope that hydraulic system holds up that long, or we're in a mess here in town. So we, I will be amending this order to add Atlantic recycling equipment, is that correct?
That's correct.
For one seventy-six, one eighty-one, and that twenty-five cents, that probably is their profit, I'm not sure. But anyways, we, this is a needed piece of equipment, we can't go without it.
Was that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion.
Motion to, to add Atlantic and one hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-one and twenty-five cents. And second, all in favor? Unanimous? We'll open up public comments first, if there are any. Seeing none, we will have council comments. John, when you close the transfer station to change it over, are you closing the whole transfer station? Or are the other, like, big item areas gonna be open?
We're gonna wait and see how, what the timeline actually give us to be able to say the parts here and what they can do. I think that's a wait and see to be able to determine right now. But my recommendation would be to close the whole thing, so that way staff can help and get things organized and wherever else. So no need with equipment moving around, having the public around.
I agree. I couldn't agree more.
And what will you?
Just have to realize that we'll, we'll make sure it's well advertised, and we'll, we'll figure it out.
Great, and what will you do with the old one?
So I think, well, it came up in the capital, we might, I mean, there's some goals of the transfer station, right? I know this is going a little bit off topic, but if we're gonna be keeping the transfer station, it would be nice to have two compactors eventually. So maybe, possibly can that custom part be made when it's out? I'm not saying, it couldn't be, like, we'd have to get more pricing, but you're still stocking a substantial cost to get that. And, you know, maybe do we look at buying another refurbished machine? And let's be real, our town is growing, and trash is one of my primary concerns, concerns, as the town is growing, to be able to get rid of it and handle the volume of traffic. You know, some of the stuff that we also do, the deck, a lot of the items, we pay, we, we charge people per yard, but we pay by ton to dispose of it. So we're talking about, you know, future designs, I'm not saying anytime soon, but is there something different? Can we get a scale house at the transfer station to be able to do that? There's a little bit of planning that needs to go into it, you know, a different piece of land, because we can't expand that piece of land and everything to do. But if we're keeping the transfer station and not going towards curbside, we have a lot of planning to come up in the near, near future and decide what direction we want to go.
Okay, great, thanks.
That was my question too.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work you've taken to research and make these suggestions. Thirty-plus years for the original, what we have in place, is that a good amount of time? Is that low, is it high? What's the shelf life, so to speak, of these types of machines?
So the refurbished one that they wanted to sell us was thirty years old type of deal, so it was a nineties machine. But they were gonna go through it and completely rebuild it. So I would say, to me, based on that, that that is an average shelf life for the machine.
Okay, and the new machine that you're getting, is there warranty, expectations as to how long that might last?
So the warranty for parts and labor on it is one year, then the structure, so it's a big metal structure as well, that covers three years. If the town wanted to, the salesman did not recommend it, but it's eight percent of the total price for extended warranty per year for parts and labor.
Wow. Now, I, you know, we can't project thirty years, who's gonna be in business necessarily? I mean, these are very particular types of machines, so.
But I would say the.
It's hard to say whether this manufacturer or that manufacturer might be better twenty years from now, if we need parts, are they still in business, who knows?
This, the, so the machine that we're purchasing is the same machine that he was on a refurbished, which is thirty years old. So obviously, to me, that tells me this company's got a longevity, being in business. I'm not saying something couldn't change, but you know, it goes to already tell me this company's been around for a while.
Okay, and lastly, because of this expense and potentially getting a second machine that you're talking about, or repair of the existing one when it's not in use, do we need to reconsider, not necessarily today, but at some future time before too long, the transfer station fees and maybe making some adjustments in those fees as a result, to offset the cost of this device?
We're talking about impact fees, possibility of coming into, because public works can't get impact fees, but transfer station can, if I'm correct, right, Zach?
There you go.
So we're talking about doing an impact fee for the building, for the expansion of the town, to be able to use some of that money to change some of the stuff. As our, like I said, the need of our transfer station's growing, if that's the direction we're gonna stay as a town, so we need to do something and plan for that. So like I said, I've talked to Zach last, last month about it, and I think something will be coming down in the future about that for the building.
Thank you.
Great, does sound like we probably should maybe do a workshop or bring something to the workshop for, or a committee for future transfer station, what it's gonna look like.
So basically what we're sort of, what I'm sort of waiting on is we're working with our engineering firm, reference the corner lot down here, to see if the Public Works Building can go down there, and the land that they did look at, which is on, like, from the S-curves down to the sand building, that would maybe be a new area for a scale house and a deck area, and have the households separate. So you're only coming through, it's just some ideas going through our head of what could be done.
Great. Thank you for your, thank you for all that. We're gonna do a roll call, please.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
So, yep, eighty dash twenty-five, waive process and award bid for purchase of cardiac equipment. Whereas section three oh two F of the Standish Charter requires a competitive bid process for transactions exceeding three thousand five hundred in value. Also, unless so waived by the town council, now be ordered that the bidding requirement regarding the purchase of items hereby waived due to the specific needs of Soul Source. And further order that the bid from blank for this equipment, as described in the bid specs, is hereby accepted at a cost not to exceed blank. And further order that the town manager is authorized on behalf of the town to execute related contract documents.
Great, Phil, would you want to talk, or do you want?
I'm just gonna make an amendment to the order right now, and I'll let him speak on it. Soul Medical Corporation not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, and now I'll have our fire chief talk on this.
This is for our cardiac monitors, this is the one that's a little bit more Soul Source than the hose. We have three of these devices, one on each ambulance. We, so we're gonna be replacing, the goal is to replace one each year for the next three years. Obviously, we spaced out a little bit, trying to keep the cost down each year, so we don't, we're not spending, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand in one year. But the idea behind these is the AEDs that we have all around town, at the schools, Hannafire, you know, the college, this building, and all the businesses that inquire. These are the ones, the same device, same brand, we asked them to purchase. But what it is, the pads, the electronics and that are the exact same, so we can show up on a scene and just plug right in without having to use any more equipment or delay anything. We also have devices on the ambulances that make these communicate to the hospital, because this is all the same stuff that the hospital has as well. So they could see if somebody was having a heart attack, or whatever the case was, they can read all the rhythms and whatnot. So that's kind of why we're sticking with the same brand. It is a good quality brand, we've had it for years, so there's, they do have a twelve year shelf life. We bought these ones in two thousand fifteen, so should be right at the end of its life by the time we get the new one.
Thank you.
Any public comments? Any council comments?
I'd talk to it. What team mount view lane? We've used the fire department, the ambulance, on some pretty rugged things this year. And fortunately, the, we are very fortunate in the town of we live in. And they should go to town hall and get one of these tickets, to be able to do it so you don't lose all your cost. My wife and myself both have used it, and the boys and the ladies are both outstanding. And we press them, and I hope people go down, say, please, can we sign up? Thank you.
Great, I believe there's a motion to amend the order to add Zoll and not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand.
Is there amendment, that's your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor? So it passes? I already opened it up, the public comments, council comments. Seeing none, if we could have a roll call on the amended order as is.
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
So it passes? Moving on to public items, is there anything from the public that would, somebody would like to, yes, Mr. Farley, if you'd like to come up, please do.
My name's Homer Farley, longtime resident of Standish. I'm very concerned about what's going on in Maple Street with the Portland Water District. And I've been fishing on that dock for seventy-two years. And I've been driving to it since nineteen sixty in March. And the water district seems to want to make a deal with us. I went, I, it took me a while, I got these pictures, I had to go through the public. No, I can't explain, public?
Yes, sir.
I got it through.
I'll for you.
Yeah. And I met with the water district about a half hour yesterday. And the way I understand it, I asked them to explain it to me. So they explained, the gentleman that's in charge, that they want to put a park in, take part of the street out, three hundred feet up to the railroad tracks. And we have to pay half of it, is what he told me. And plus, we have to be responsible for maintenance. If they do the maintenance, like it's done on there now, at the bottom of the hill by the wharf, we put like twenty-six thousand or thirty thousand dollars in. Well, that went on good for a couple of years, now it's grown up. Iden and Steve kept it cut down so we could fish. And it's the only public access to Sebagel Lake, that you can fish off a wharf and handicap. And all of Sebagel. The other day, I was down there and, at the boat ramp, a lady come in, older lady, and she asked about fishing, she wanted to get down there. They said, no, you can't, you can't have your dog on the beach. So her husband was on oxygen, so I told him, I says, go over to Maple Street, use that wharf. And they went over, they were so happy, they were from Massachusetts. But he'd always wanted to fish on Sebagel, so he got to fish there. But I talked to the water district, and he explained to me, I told him, I said, I'm handicapped. I have a handicap hunt license, so I can hunt from a motor vehicle, but I can't walk down that hill, and I can't walk up it. I have a heart and lung disease. So I asked him, I said, well, how about me? He said, oh, you won't be able to, you won't be able to drive down there anymore. So I, I said, then how do you call that handicap? Well, you, you can walk down. No, I can't walk down. If I could walk down, I would, I would be more than willing to, I would love to. So I just want you to know, when it came, comes up, to think about other people. An awful lot of people that are handicapped like me, I could name this probably a dozen that goes down there about every day. Some are from Gorham, some are from Portland, some are from Standish. But in the spring and fall, they're there every day, and if Portland Water District does that, that puts, puts me out, I've been there for, I'm eighty years old, I've been there for seventy-odd years. And I don't see why I had to get, go through the public to know, to find these two, three little pictures. And do you people have them? Should.
The town does.
So Mr. Farley, we have a workshop coming up in two weeks, and they'll, they'll get it all if they haven't yet, it might probably went out in their package tonight.
Most people like to know a little before they get to that stuff.
Yeah, they'll have it, they were draft, they're just ideas.
When the work party, the workshop will, is coming up, the twenty-eighth, that's right around the corner. So I hope you guys get to see this stuff, they make it look good on paper.
I'd like to.
We don't have anybody, our parks department, or whatever it is, down to the boat ramp, they take care of that. But we don't have anybody, our parks department or whatever it is, down to the boat ramp, they take care of that.
Okay, Mr. Farley.
How long, how much can they do?
Thank you for your words, and we are having a workshop in two weeks.
I will be.
And that is your, your, unfortunately, your five minutes. Thank you for bringing that to our attention and I can look forward to it in, at the workshop.
Okay, well, thank you for the five minutes.
Thank you, sir.
If I may, can I make a comment?
Yeah, if you could do it pretty, uh, quick.
Very quickly, yes. I'd just like to refer you to the section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three. As a, a public grantee, I'm sure that the Water District gets public grants. They should have a section five oh four coordinator in a complaint procedure, may want to ask them who that is. Also, the American Disabilities Act would also require that they have someone that would handle ready access to Portland Water District facilities. And they would be required to provide ready access to persons with disabilities such as yourself. So I would urge you to ask them about who their five oh four coordinator is and how they provide ready access in, in compliance with section five oh four in the Americans with Disability Act. Thank you.
Yes, good information. Are there any other pu, uh, public items?
I have one. Come on to the mic, John, for a minute. Says the town, fish stories here. What's going on in your life here with your son?
My son and his fishing partner just won the Junior World Nationals out in Pierre, South Dakota. They fished against sixty-nine other teams, three fish women, and the last day they weighed in twelve point three pounds. My son caught one of the bigger fish at five point seven, small mouth bass. It's a pretty big accomplishment. They get a six thousand dollar scholarship. Portland Press did an article on them and News Channel Six will have an article coming out this weekend.
Yay.
And that almost tops the Bonny Eagle Girls softball team, right?
Almost.
Great job.
Great job.
Great job, that's amazing. Any other public items? Seeing none, are there any announcements?
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing? Great. We are not moving into executive session, so if I have a, if there's an emotion to adjourn, we, we can. I hear a motion, we have a second. Mr. Pomelo will second. All in favor? Unanimous?